First item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step forward to the podium on our left. State your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Going once. Come on up, Ken.
I thought it would shock you all by not saying anything.
I know. Ken's here, surely he has comments.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment, and continued opportunity to comment and share our thoughts about the proposed draft wireless ordinance. My name is Ken Lyons with Bush Law Firm on behalf of AT&amp;T. First of all, thank you for the efforts you guys have been putting in. I know it's been several months of very detailed and technical, excuse me, conversations about how wireless systems work and how these regulations affect the quality of service that people have. We also want to thank staff and the changes and the recommendations by the city attorney regarding some of the comments that we made in our last letter. Generally speaking, we continue to be concerned about the lack of workable siting options in the draft wireless code. We've talked about utility pole height limitations that in our view constructively would require variances or adjustments every time in order to build a workable network. We're concerned about the prohibition of towers in most of the city, even stealth towers that are well-integrated into neighborhoods like monopines or monitors, things like that. We're also very concerned about the preference for small cell and DAS systems in the code. We believe the code inappropriately prefers these types of systems, and courts have held that such preferences violate the Telecom Act. You know, a lot of the conversations we've had with staff, we've grown concerned that they continue to say that the reason why we shouldn't have more heights is because we could just build smaller sites like DAS or small cells, and those are the types of preferences that we believe, and at least in the Clarkstown case, which we referenced in our letter, we would just point you to that, the reason why that would, that such preference would violate the Telecom Act. If the city prefers an adjustment or variance process to be the last resort, the relief valve, if you will, then we believe the use table and the regulations, the rest of the regulations need to be workable. Because, you know, right now, we have this conflict, this inherent conflict in the code, and we believe the policy will hurt communications networks that Kenmore citizens depend on. If the code is unworkable and the adjustment provision is designed only to cure significant gaps in coverage, then service will have to significantly deteriorate before a carrier can even begin the siting process. In other words, we can't actually keep up with the exponential growth in demand, we have to wait for service to be broken before we can actually fix it. That's one of the challenges that we see, a dynamic emerging. If we have unworkable standards, we have an adjustment process that's only designed to be used seldomly, and so we have to wait for service to break before we can actually propose a fix to it. We also appreciate the city attorney's analysis, but we question whether or not using the adjustment process to allow uses that are otherwise prohibited in the zone to be built as anything different than spot zoning. We believe that these uses should be allowed in these zones first so that the adjustment process then can be used if necessary to allow for them. And we also believe the public process, the public meetings and the notice radius is excessive for the process that's being requested. So a type 2 zoning process, it would appear, the requirements of 1,000 feet of radius and having a community meeting is significantly out of proportion with the type of process that we're being requested to go through. And then, one of the silent challenges, and I mentioned this in my comments last time, was that the code are the non-conforming requirements. The backbone of Kenmore's network is built on these sites, and basically, every site would become non-conforming under the proposed regulations, and requiring these sites to be either reduced in height or replaced will disrupt and hurt services that people depend on. We have provided for you tonight a complete redline of the draft regulations with our comments, with some suggested changes, as well as a letter, and happy to walk through it or answer any questions if you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else?
Lynda Atkins.
I'm Lynda Atkins. I'm an attorney with Davis Wright Tremaine, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of T-Mobile. This afternoon, I had emailed to you and to the staff some comments that we prepared. There's a memo which outlines provisions of federal and state law that I thought would be useful for you to refer to and with respect to the kind of comments that AT&amp;T and T-Mobile are making about the ordinance. And then, there's a table, and what I did in the table was referring to the comments and the redline that AT&amp;T had provided to you. We're indicating that generally, T-Mobile agrees with AT&amp;T's recommended changes to the draft ordinance, and in some cases, I think we have additional comments or a little bit different approach that we'd like to suggest. So if there are any specific questions about the table comments, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I wanted to just hit on a few themes that we think are important from T-Mobile's perspective with respect to the ordinance. First of all, as Mr. Lyons said, we're concerned that there not be restrictions or a difficult process to reconstruct or repair or maintain an existing site. And again, as he indicated, this is because in the existing network, so people are relying on the existing network for the coverage they get on their mobile phones and their other mobile devices, and every one of those sites is critical to the way that that network performs. And if there are some, for some reason, a site needs to be rebuilt, or it's damaged, it needs to be repaired, there should not be additional restrictions on that process so long as it's reconstructed the way that it was. With respect to the priority scheme for locations, we would share AT&amp;T's concern about the limitation on constructing new towers. There's a preference hierarchy that starts with co-locating on rooftops or facades and then moves down through non-residential sites and utility pole sites. And the reality is, whenever a carrier goes to site a new facility, and T-Mobile, this is certainly the case for them, they're first going to look for co-location opportunities. Every carrier always wants to co-locate as a first priority. The difficulty is, is that, you know, reasonably often, we find that there simply aren't any realistic available co-location opportunities, and T-Mobile has, you know, from time to time, found itself in a situation where it had a gap in coverage in primarily a residential area, so it would be a community like Kenmore where a lot of the jurisdiction is residential, and they are not able to provide, either they don't have coverage at all, or they don't have adequate coverage, they can't provide enough signal strength so that people can get in building coverage, they can't get the data that they need. And in those situations, if there's no, most jurisdictions have an option to construct a new tower on a non-residential site in a residential zone, so typically, those would be a church or a school or some kind of public property. And T-Mobile would really urge you to consider making that option available as you could make it the last priority in the priority scheme. In other words, if the carrier couldn't find any one of those other sites to close its gap, then it could apply to construct a new tower. Co-locations, we'd urge you to not try to regulate those, particularly if they meet the standards for an eligible facility request under Section 6409 of the Spectrum Act. With respect to utility poles, we would share AT&amp;T's concern about the height. My people at T-Mobile, site development people, tell me that the typical tree height here in Kenmore is 80 to 120 feet. And for T-Mobile's technology, T-Mobile is higher frequency than AT&amp;T or some of the other carriers, and they have to be able to get the center line of their antenna at least at the tree height or above the tree height in order to get the signal out. And if they're limited to 45 or 50 feet, they're not going to be able to accomplish the coverage that they need from that size of a pole. One of our other concerns, there is a section in the draft ordinance that is laying out criteria that the applicant would have to show in order to demonstrate that an alternative is not feasible. So you've got a priority section, applicant has to demonstrate that each one of those higher priorities aren't feasible before it can move to one of the lower priorities. And I would encourage you not to try to specify criteria because, as I indicated in the federal law summary of my memo, it's a very site-specific and fact-specific kind of question. And the carrier, you know, is always going to have the burden to show reasonable issues with higher priority sites that it has to demonstrate before it can move to a lower priority site. And the concern is, if those criteria are too specific, you may be eliminating legitimate reasons for the carrier to be able to justify why it needs to move to a lower priority. It's just very difficult to anticipate all the different issues that might come up with a particular site. I think in terms of the use table and the locational priorities, we would join AT&amp;T's comments and including its comments about changes to the notes on those sections. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about T-Mobile's technology or coverage in particular.
Okay. Why don't we let any other citizen render comment first, and we may bring you or Ken back up.
Sure, okay.
Thanks, Lynda. Anybody else? Carol?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you again for letting AT&amp;T come and speak with you. Tonight, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things I've already mentioned in the past about how important it is that we have good options for building out our network. As you know, people rely on their devices, not just for use, but also, you know, in emergency situations. And so, I know we want to protect the views and the scenery of your residences, but I think we also need to consider the importance to make sure that they have an option for reaching emergency services and using their phones in all areas of the city. So ultimately, what we're looking for really is a reasonable code, one that gives us the options. If you close one area, open another, make, give us options on where we can build out. We just want to make sure that your residences here, residents have reliable, good wireless coverage. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else? There being no other citizen stepping forward, that satisfies the citizen comment element of the agenda. I want to, as we have in recent meetings, invite any commissioners, if they want to raise specific questions at this point, of Ken or Lynda or Carol, with respect to the points they've raised, to go ahead and do so. Commissioner Baker? Can you hear me? Okay. So, nobody? Go ahead, Deborah.
So I just had a question for Lynda. There was a comment that you made about wanting it to be straightforward or easy to repair or rebuild, and those are two different things. Can you clarify when you would need, what would be a circumstance where you'd need to completely rebuild, but it would be exactly the same kind of facility?
You know, I think that's a really good question. The only circumstance that really comes to my mind is if there was an earthquake, some kind of a catastrophe that caused a tower to fall. I honestly, I've been told that, I don't know about the utility poles, but a monopole typically is constructed so that they withstand even a category 5 hurricane. So, I mean, I think the situation where that might arise, particularly if we're talking about a monopole, would be, the set of circumstances would be pretty small.
Yeah.
But the option should be there. I mean, the concept is, let's preserve existing sites. Let's not make it so that we convert every existing site into a non-conforming use, and then the carrier has to go through an elaborate land use process in order to restore an existing site.
Well, again, I think there's a distinction between repairing and rebuilding. That's all I'm saying, because I don't think we have any restriction. I mean, I, maybe you can point to the place where it says you can't repair an existing site, but, because I know rebuilding is different.
So, in the exemptions portion of the code, I think AT&amp;T's original comment was they were suggesting that we maintain, the current code allows maintenance, reconstruction, repair, or replacement of a wireless facility or a transmission support structure, and the new language says, I think it says "conforming." And the point I'm trying to make is, we would recommend that you eliminate any reference to conforming or non-conforming. In other words, keep the same exemption you've already got, allow an existing site to be rebuilt. And if for some reason, a structure becomes unsound or needs to be replaced in some other, for some other reason, let's allow it to be rebuilt, you know, at the height that it was, you know, the same, whatever kinds of, you know, whether it was close-mounted or whatever other conditions had been applied to that site, let's just let it be rebuilt the way that it was, so that you preserve the existing site coverage. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. Oh, it's, I see where you redlined it. Okay, well, we can ask staff about that. I was not under the impression that we were restricting repair. Well, and in fact, it says "conforming" or "non-conforming." I mean, that, "conforming" and "non-conforming" put together are all of them, so I think we're probably good. But we can, we can talk about that.
Just a minute, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna let, Lynda looks like she wants to respond to that.
Yeah, there, I was just, I was looking at the staff version of the ordinance in your packet, and in under 1860030, there actually isn't an exemption like the one that AT&amp;T and T-Mobile are recommending. There's subsection G, which says, emergency maintenance or repair in the event a building permit is required, that's when the building permit can be filed. And similarly, H is emergency reconstruction or replacement of a conforming facility. In the event a building permit is required for emergency reconstruction or replacement, filing of the building permit application shall be required within 30 days after completion of emergency activity. So, I mean, what we're focusing on is that one, H is limited to a conforming facility. So if there's, apparently, under this language, if there's any non-conformity with respect to the facility, then there, you may not be able to do an emergency replacement without more process. And, you know, we may not have proposed the best language, but we'd like to just call that issue to your attention, and, you know, maybe staff could come up with a better way to draft it than we did, but.
Lori, you want to respond? Come on over.
Good evening. So I just wanted to clarify that last point. If you have a conforming facility, you can do repair and maintenance on a conforming facility. That doesn't have to be put into the code. For a non-conforming facility, the rules for non-conformance are in another chapter of the zoning code, and a non-conforming wireless communication facility would be handled through those rules, which allow reconstruction in the event of an emergency, and also talk about opportunities for modifications or expansions, separate from and aside from the new rules for ECFM, which allow modifications to non-conforming or conforming facilities. So I just wanted to clarify that point.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we go through the agenda, get down to this item on the agenda, then we'll pick up with some questions for Ken and Lynda as part of that. So that'll close the citizen comment portion of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of the March 15, 2016 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any amendments? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. No opposition, any abstentions? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is communication facilities continued. Now I turn to the city staff.
There are a couple of ways you could approach the agenda this evening, depending on your preference. You could start by going through the remaining issues as outlined in Lori's memo, some of the substantive issues that you haven't got to, and then pick up addressing some of AT&amp;T's comments, or you could reverse that.
Right.
As we only got the T-Mobile letter this afternoon, we're not going to be able to fully address those comments, even though I would say the majority are probably aligned with AT&amp;T, so we would have to probably delay discussion to your 19th meeting. So it's really a preference on how you want to organize the agenda this evening.
Right. Does anybody have a preference? I'm hearing anything. I want to, I want to run a couple of questions by Lynda first, and then hopefully, and I don't intend to get into the full-blown discussion of her points. I agree with you. This memo's new to us. I suspect nobody's read it. And Ken is very thorough, but it's hard to keep up with his citizen comment. You know, there's like 20, 30 points there, and I'm trying to write them down, and it's kind of hard to sift through everything and then relate it back to what we've already discussed, so that's going to be a little time-consuming. Why don't we, if I could, ask a couple of questions of Lynda, and then we'll get to the memo that Lori wrote. But, Lynda, it's good to see you here. I have to ask if you, I know you have a lot of agreement with AT&amp;T. Have you been following this, has T-Mobile been following this process since December when we took it up?
We actually, so, I was retained recently to work on this, so I'm kind of playing catch-up.
Yeah.
And I haven't, I haven't been able to review all of the minutes from all of your meetings. I know you've been working on this issue from a sort of philosophical standpoint for a while. So, you know, I guess part of the reason why I'm trying to structure my comments so that you can understand that in many ways, we're aligned with what AT&amp;T is saying, and then just trying to highlight for you specific issues that are of particular concern to T-Mobile.
Thank you. So, I think you said the typical tree height in Kenmore is 80 to 120 feet. Is that right?
That's what the RF team has told me, yes.
And you're telling me that the height of your antenna has to exceed that? To be effective?
Yes.
So you're proposing?
So, and it really, so it depends a lot on where the site is located, obviously. You know, there, the tree cover varies from place to place, and it relates also to the topography, the ground elevation.
Right. That's way outside the ballpark we've been talking about for the height.
Yeah.
Of existing utilities and that kind of thing, so I don't see that being realistic, but what I'm also interested in knowing, though, is, and the big, the big point of confusion, I think for the commission and to some extent the staff, is we're dealing with engineering that we're not experts in, that nobody in the city staff is an expert in. We're hearing a lot of comments from AT&amp;T, which, and Ken, to his credit, has a lot of engineering elements to his comments, but it's very hard for us to balance and weigh our concerns against those engineering concerns. And if you have some engineering background to talk about the extent to which you can provide coverage under the height limits and the allowances that we're proposing here, that would be helpful, so that we can find the balance point that protects our views, that protects the aesthetics in this community, and still provides reasonable coverage. That's where we're going. So that's sort of the big picture we're coming from.
Well, unfortunately, I'm not the RF engineer that you need to talk to you about the technical details. I, well, I guess what I would encourage you to think about it in terms of what's the priority? What locations are allowed in the priority hierarchy? And I think a lot of jurisdictions approach this issue in a way similar to what your ordinance does. The, I think the main thing that we're seeing missing in this ordinance is, in the priority table, there's, there's simply not an item on the list, and in a lot of jurisdictions, it would be the last item, would be the lowest priority, would be, for example, a new tower on a non-residential property in either a residential zone or some other zone. And under that kind of a structure, someone submits an application, and their application, they're going to have to demonstrate with technical engineering evidence and other evidence why it is that they can't achieve their coverage goal at one of the higher priorities. So, in the, in most jurisdictions, that dovetails with a conditional use permit process. So, you know, anytime you build a new tower, you have to get a conditional use permit, and most jurisdictions have something similar to what AT&amp;T has suggested for utility poles. They'll have a certain extension that you can do, you know, without having to get a conditional use permit, but if you, if you need to go higher than that, then you have to get a conditional use permit, and you have to demonstrate with sufficient evidence to the hearing examiner why it is that you need that additional height. So, you know, T-Mobile is not asking you to just say, hey, you guys can do 120 feet or 150 feet, wherever it is that you feel like. You know, we're, we're happy to have a process, a conditional use permit process for that taller height, that would ask us as an applicant to demonstrate why it is that we need that height. And in that context, a conditional use permit context, we actually do, we present RF engineering data and reports that justify the coverage, we give coverage maps, we might have drive test data, we might bring it, actually bring an RF engineer to a hearing to testify to the hearing examiner about why that particular height is needed on that particular site. And, you know, it's just, it's very difficult to deal with all of that through specific criteria, which is why we feel that, you know, the locational priority with a conditional use permit process for any of the, you know, heights or other, you know, you've obviously got concerns about the way towers look, and they, you don't want them too tall, so you can put those types of applications into a CU process, and we, you know, you can still have a maximum height limit. So, I mean, I, assuming that the information I was given about tree heights generally is accurate, 80 to 120 feet, you know, you might find some number in there that you would feel comfortable allowing a pole to go up to, and then a process that the applicant has to justify with engineering and other evidence with respect to the taller height. And in most jurisdictions, that, it's both an engineering justification and like a steffing. You have to show that you're through some kind of stealth technology, whether it's making it look like a flagpole or a monitfer, or, I mean, there are different ways to deal with it, and yet, which of those steffing technologies you use most appropriately will depend on the location.
So, I'm going to let staff, if they want, respond to that, but it's, we've got an adjustment process, as you know, in here, so you're asking for the CUP option in case you need to get, to get more height or other allowances. I guess what you're saying is you object to the I guess what you're saying is you object to the terms of the adjustment process. Is that right? It's too specific? Is that what you're saying? You don't like criteria?
You're referring to the one that the staff was describing in the memo?
Yeah. Which we've talked about at multiple meetings already.
Yeah, so, well, for example, I'm looking at the staff memo on page two of their memo. So it's a type three process, which I'm assuming must be the conditional use permit process. And then the criteria, I think one of the issues is the criteria. So significant gap in service, we've got a sentence that has a specific formulation of what constitutes a significant gap in service. And the point that we're making in the memo that we sent along with the table is that under Ninth Circuit case law, that question of what constitutes a significant gap is, it's not something you can apply a bright line test to. So such that users are regularly unable to connect to the service network. So does that mean that when I try to dial out, when I try to make a voice call, I can't connect? Does it mean that if I'm using my device to access the internet, that it's dropping me every 30 seconds, or every two minutes, or every five minutes? You know, unable to achieve reliable wireless coverage within a building? I mean, that, that part of that sentence, I think, is in conformity with federal law on the subject. The rest of it, I just think is, it's going to be difficult to interpret. And what you really want to show in a significant gap investigation is, you want the carrier to provide their specific engineering information, which is going to be specific to their frequency and their network. They're going to show you the hole that they have in their network. And the hole that T-Mobile might have in its network is going to be different than the hole that AT&amp;T has, because they're at two different frequencies, and their networks are designed differently.
Okay. I'll leave it at that, and we may get back to you unless anybody else has a follow-up on that.
Not on that point, but on another question.
Did you want to ask Linda something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Linda. You mentioned, if I got you here correctly, that you said every carrier wants to co-locate, but co-location is hard to find?
Yeah, it can be, yes.
It can be. That's kind of a key thing, it seems, because that's obviously our top, you know, priority on the locational priority. So could you elaborate a little bit on that, and why it's hard, and what, you know, sort of specific issues you see with co-location?
So I'm looking at the staff draft, so 1860040 is the locational priority. So co-location on an existing tower, that works if there is a tower in the right place that has room and it's the right height. You know, and honestly, there aren't that many existing towers, because again, carriers try to limit the number of those that they construct. They're very expensive to construct, and they may, so in Kenmore, if you're driving the sites as much as possible to utility poles, and you're limiting the size of the utility pole to, let's say, 50 or 55 feet, and you've got to have separation from the PSE lines, you have to have separation from the other carriers' antennas, you're not going to have co-location space on that kind of a facility. The rooftop antenna and the facade antenna, so if we were in downtown Bellevue or downtown Seattle, that's an option that often works, because there are a lot of tall buildings. Not so much in Kenmore. Antenna on a utility or light pole in a non-residential zone, so from T-Mobile's perspective, I think that would wind up meaning that if they needed to provide coverage in that non-residential zone, they could probably do something. But that, putting a site on a pole that's in a non-residential zone is not necessarily going to fill a gap in a residential zone unless they're really close together. New tower in a non-residential zone, and then we've got attachment of an antenna to a non-residential building in a residential zone. So I guess that would allow, if you had like a church spire or something, maybe you could work out a co-location there. But again, that's, that's going to depend on how tall's the spire, is the church going to be willing to lease to you, is it in the right place? And then we've got attachment of an antenna to a utility pole in a residential zone. So, I mean, we might, we might work our way all the way through those, all those priorities, and maybe still not be able to find a good site, because the height of the utility pole is too limited. And it may be that there, maybe there's a school or a park property that's got existing trees on it, where you could conceal a monopole in among those trees. I've seen this type of situation in other jurisdictions, where there was a really good site, and we couldn't use it, because the code didn't allow a new tower, for example.
But the code allows the adjustment process. So could you come to the city and say, well...
So this is the issue that Ken was...
This is suited for an adjustment.
Yeah, Ken was speaking to this issue, and I also want to speak to it. You can't use an adjustment process to change the use. So, you know, a variance process, a use variance is not something that typically is allowed. Most codes will not allow you to change the use. So the way this priority is structured right now, putting a tower in a residential zone is not allowed. And if we go into the hearing examiner and we say we want an adjustment to allow us to put a use in a zone where your code doesn't allow it, I mean, maybe he'll say, okay, well, I've got this adjustment process, it says I can do it. But your citizens may hire an attorney to come in and say, we don't care what you call it, you're still, it's spot zoning. And that's been ruled illegal by the court. So I think what we're trying to urge you to do is to, I mean, it can be your lowest priority, but at least make that option available as a use under the right set of circumstances. So, and then the adjustment process could be that process where you have to demonstrate that you're entitled to get that. I mean, you can put conditions on it and make it kind of hard to get, but you have to at least have the use available.
Mark?
I guess this is for city staff. When, has the city attorney looked at our locational priority list and given any, this seems like a legal question that is beyond my understanding, so...
Correct. We checked with the city attorney, and she felt that the priority list as developed was fine, as long as we had the adjustment provision. And it's her perspective that the adjustment provision would be used to address use as well as development standard.
Linda, you want to respond to that?
Well, I, maybe, maybe the city attorney, we need to sit down and have a conversation with the city attorney, because I don't know why she feels that that is appropriate, because we'd have to dialogue about it.
Right. And I feel like it'd be nice to have the city attorney here, when we're having to sift through these legal challenges, and then you have to rely on the city attorney, but they're working remotely, and we're asked to make the decisions. So, yeah. So we kind of circle back to what seemed to be valid points from AT&amp;T and now T-Mobile, and they come back to legal questions that we're not suited to answer.
Right. We tried to get the information from the city attorney. We certainly could ask her if she could attend a future meeting. I will say she's not available on Tuesdays, so we would have to schedule a special meeting for that.
The city attorney is a law firm. Could somebody from her firm appear?
There is one attorney working on this project, and she's the one who's been following it through.
And the only one who's suited to answer.
I think that that would be the appropriate situation.
Yeah, we'll have to have a special meeting on another night.
This is important stuff.
Okay. Anybody else have a question for Linda? Carol Baker? Did you want to ask anything? Okay. I wonder if we're on mute part of the time.
She said she's having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, no, it's commercial, I'll listen to see what it is. But maybe not, so just throwing it out there. Thanks, Linda. All right. You guys have been patient. Do you want to add anything? Do you want to respond in any way to what Linda and Ken have said?
No, I think, you know, we, do they have the memo? So we won't show which way you were going to go on this tonight, so we will be prepared in the future to bring back a memo that addresses the point-by-point of AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. And we will certainly be having the city attorney review both letters and review the staff response. And if you decide you want to hold a special meeting and have her here, we can certainly do that all at one time. I think, you know, at some point, you know, the letters keep coming in, a lot of the points are restated, but there's also new points that keep coming up, so we're constantly playing this sort of a catch-up game to try and stay ahead of this, and try and keep the planning commission up to speed as much as we can to, but there is that sort of delay of being able to get an adequate response, you know, response back and have the attorney review it. So we could probably make an attempt, it wouldn't be the 19th, but it would, could probably be around that time, where we could try and get a meeting together and go through these point-by-point, if that's what you wish to do.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to think of the most efficient way, and that sounds like it may be, because we keep coming back to the, we get, we hit these roadblocks. Part of the problem is AT&amp;T and now T-Mobile give us something the day of, and there's no way anybody can respond to that. And then we're rehashing, it seems like, some things that haven't been, we've tried, we've had meetings into the 9:30 that go later than normal, and we're trying to work out many of these questions, and then it feels like we haven't worked them out. We come to the next meeting, and they're still on the table. And I know AT&amp;T's not satisfied with what's being proposed, but maybe the most efficient thing is, if you think there's better language that strikes the balance you've heard us describe, give us the language, instead of getting back into the broader picture. And maybe we can compare how specific language, you've got that now?
Yeah.
Okay. And I did see, and T-Mobile's got some red-line stuff, so maybe that's where we'll make more progress, instead of going back to the conceptual points. Go ahead, Deborah.
You know, and I guess I'm feeling, I guess I'll just have to say it, I'm feeling a little badgered. You know, we've been doing this a long time, and, you know, I've been trying to be responsive, and, you know, to get ambushed on the day of with a letter, you know, doesn't feel real good, doesn't give anyone time, you know, I mean, it wastes, it wastes everybody's time. So can't say that engenders my, my good feeling, or willingness to engage in that process. So I guess the thing that we keep coming around to really is around the adjustment process. So, you know, if, if the adjustment process deals with both use, if it deals with it in the way that you're articulating, Lori, then I think we're good. If it doesn't, then, you know, we need to kind of figure out a way that the criteria and the tabling will. But, you know, it was our, I think, our original understanding that it would deal with, with these kinds of things. If the provider kind of exhausts all of the options that are there, that's what the adjustment process is for, is making the case that, well, actually, we can't do A, B, C, and D, so now we're down to E. And I guess that's how I understood it. And if we can use it in that way, then I think that would address, I think that would address most of the concerns. And then we don't need to waste your time going point-by-point-by-point-by-point, because those can all be dealt with under the adjustment process.
Anybody else? Carol, I heard some crackling on the speakerphone. Are you back? Darn. All right. Yeah, I feel like the window's closing here, you know? We've gone through, I thought we made good faith efforts to revisit things that we thought we had decided in the last couple of meetings, and now we're being asked, well, let's revisit some more. And I feel like we've done a lot of revisiting, and unless there's something pretty clear-cut that we're doing wrong, that we're missing, and according to the city attorney, we're not, although I do see a gap between the city attorney telling us, let's get more strict with the adjustment process, and the service providers saying, not only you got to loosen that up, you got to loosen up the primary criteria for the permit. So I feel like we're sort of in the middle between the city attorney and counsel for the service providers.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, and, I mean, you said it...
Like the gap's getting wider, we're trying to bridge it.
Right. And I think you've said that very nicely also, that, you know, we're trying to balance it, and basically, you know, we're hearing from one constituency, we're hearing from the carrier. And, and I have still not heard clearly what specifically in our current code, the proposed code, prevents them from doing what is necessary, given that there is this adjustment process. And that is, you know, and without that, I mean, this just is a lot of froth to me. I just, it's not, it's not meaningful. So, sorry, I'm just...
No, that's fine, no. I want everybody to be able to feel comfortable putting in, I don't, I wouldn't go that far, but I see where you're coming from. I think Linda made some specific points, Ken made a few specific points, I wrote down a few, but I don't know the answers. And I wish we had council, city councils here to help us answer those. Anybody else? I'm going to move into, I'm going to let staff start taking over here. They've been pretty patient, unless there's something else, because I know we're in the flow with the comments.
I just want to echo the second part of what Deborah said about, you know, we haven't heard, to my knowledge, from the public at all yet. I've missed a couple of meetings, but...
We've had no's...
Have we had any, any citizens here? So that's a whole piece that, well, I totally respect the...
Unless that guy back there is here to talk about the citizens' response to all this, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. You're the only new face we've seen in the last two months.
I'd rather just listen.
No, I'm not asking you to, I'm just saying.
So I think that's a perspective that we need to hear, you know, with all due respect to the carriers, and I appreciate their, their views, but I feel like we haven't got the full...
We're not getting two sides on this. I mean, we are getting staff, and we are getting remotely, city attorney. So that's helpful. But there's still this gap in knowledge and specifics about the engineering. I mean, we don't know what is needed to provide reasonable coverage. Ken, you objected to the criteria, saying, well, there's got to be a significant gap in service before we can even invoke the adjustment process, but I don't really know what alternatives we have. What else would there be? Would we just anticipate a gap in service and then let you start building stuff? And so that's, that's sort of premature. But we don't know. We don't know the, the engineering side of this. Well enough to say, well, here's where we can modify our criteria to accommodate what's necessary. So until we know that, I think, and I think the commission has agreed on this general conceptual approach, we're going to have a strict policy. It's similar to other jurisdictions, but we're going to protect our views, and we're going to protect aesthetics, and we know there's public sensitivity to especially tall freestanding poles. And then we'll give you the adjustment process as a way of making your case, and the public gets to step in at that point, too. So, and, so that's where we are, and I've said my piece, and hopefully we can address this efficiently and perhaps completely the next meeting or two. Go ahead, Lori and Debbie, if you want to add or proceed. Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis, please, go ahead.
Just a question here. We're talking about the lack of engineering technical specificity, and I don't know whether we should do more than just talk about it. I don't know whether to ask AT&amp;T or T-Mobile if they have some engineers that might come for a special presentation, so at least we've got a little more education in some of those areas, or whether staff is fully briefed on all the aspects of it. I'm just not sure.
I think that's a good point, but my bigger concern, because particularly Ken has had a lot of engineering, has given us a lot of engineering descriptions about what we need, what we expect to need, what the growth has been, what kind of towers satisfy that need, what I don't think we have as a counterpoint. We don't have somebody from the citizen side or the city side saying, well, we don't think they need all that. It's implicit in what you're writing here, but we don't know concretely. My, my preference would be to have somebody from that side of the engineering argument come, come before us and say, well, here's where, here's where the growth is, here's what's needed, and here's what we may expect to need in the near future, and maybe you ought to modify your criteria accordingly. And... accordingly, in particular ways.
I agree with what you're commenting on. I am not expecting the public to be able to respond to those type of concerns until we end up going through whatever process we say they have to go through. And I don't want to be unrealistic in expecting too much from the public before that.
And I agree, I don't expect somebody to walk through the door and have all that, but the city might. The city might engage somebody, a consultant who would be able to. Again, I know the city has limits, time, budget, and the whole bit, so we've got to work with what we've got. I'm not saying that's the only way to do this, but it would be a way of bridging that gap in information.
And just as we have been looking at what other jurisdictions have done, did any of them go through a technological review to get themselves educated? I just don't know what the right answer is.
Right. There's no way to know.
We could be looking at cities that didn't do it either, and therefore were following a very bad pattern.
Right, there's no way to know. All right, staff, if you'd like to, proceed.
Well, I think what you're trying to do is you're dealing with this proposed set of regulations, which is land use based, so what you're dealing with is how this technology looks to the land use base, what the appearance is, what the location is. So regardless of the technology, so the technology side, though, the carriers, you've been asking, you know, what is your service gap? What kind of facilities will you need to provide? And how does this prevent that? And, you know, there's an unwillingness to share that, I guess for whatever reason, proprietary or whatever, so you are stuck. But again, you're just dealing with the land use side, and the carriers are wanting the most flexibility they can have. So you're trying to balance that, what the carriers need, and also what is right for the community. And what is right for the community is basically more focused on what you see, rather than the technological aspects of how it's provided and the signals and everything else. And that's why the code was developed, to be looking more like a land use code, rather than signal-based, which it was previously. So again, I, you know, I know that you're kind of struggling with how do you move this forward when you're faced with comments from the carriers who are saying that this, the code that you're proposing, isn't flexible enough, we want more flexibility, and your responses tell us what is preventing you, and you're not getting the response you need. So I don't think hiring an engineer or anything would help that. The only way that that would help is if the carriers are willing to share that information. I don't really know what an independent engineer would be able to tell you on this.
So Lori or Deb, if you want to proceed with the memo, why don't we go there?
Okay, so the memo that's dated March 30th, 2016, is the memo that we were going to go through this evening, and it has some of the sections that we've carried over from previous meetings that we were looking for direction on. The first item is, of course, the adjustment provision. As you recall, this was something that, actually, AT&amp;T had initially recommended, an adjustment provision, rather than using a land use variance. And after looking at some recommended adjustment provisions, staff agreed that we thought this was a good idea. We then developed some language. We had the city attorney review it. You reviewed it at a meeting, and you had asked a couple of questions and wanted staff to come back with answers. And those two questions had to do with, why was the word "significant gap" in coverage used? And the second part was, why, how should, I guess, increased capacity be used as a rationale as in the service coverage? Should the gap deal just with service coverage, or should it also deal with capacity? So we went back to the city attorney, and the city attorney said that significant gap in coverage was language taken from, again, case law that she had reviewed, and that this was indeed a strict, a more strict test, but she felt that the adjustment provision is a case that someone can use for any request. You can modify any section of that whole chapter through the adjustment provision, including use. And so she wanted to fall out on the stricter end of the spectrum. Really, an adjustment should be an exception. And you recall, we do have conditional use permits, which are a type-two process in Kenmore in the code already, different processes. The adjustment, from staff's perspective, is sort of the last resort. You shouldn't have to get to an adjustment, but it does allow that safety valve if there really is an issue. So in terms of capacity, the city attorney did not include, did not want to include capacity, because she felt that that argument could always be made, that there would always be a situation where you would want an increase in capacity, that that is the motivation of the carriers to provide more capacity, whereas coverage is a more finite item. You really do have a problem, and there is a gap that you have to fill. So with that, she had recommended retaining the word "significant," which you actually had done with the first round, but she recommended taking out "or" capacity. And I highlighted that in yellow on page two of the memo.
So I read this a little differently. It reads, "a significant," this is page two, "item B2, subsection I, a significant gap in the service coverage or capacity." I read that "significant gap" to modify both the words, phrase "service coverage" and "capacity," so it's not just any increase in capacity would justify an adjustment, it would be any significant gap in capacity. But maybe that doesn't make any sense, because do you really have gaps in capacity, or do you just have gaps in service coverage, and is the word redundant in this context, even if you do have a gap in capacity?
I think the notion was that you're always going to have a gap in capacity from someone who wants to increase their business model.
Well, if you're talking about a gap, you're comparing things, and you're looking to bridge the gap, to say
Current capacity and future capacity.
A desire for unlimited capacity enables somebody to apply for an adjustment, doesn't compare anything, it's unlimited. I think that's how the city attorney is reading this, and that doesn't make sense in the context of an adjustment. It's like a blank check.
Right. She's, what she said is you would always be able to
That doesn't make, I was, why would that reading be, why would that interpretation be here in the first place? Did I misread it? Was it miswritten originally?
So originally, coverage, it was only coverage. And then the planning commission added "capacity."
Oh, I see.
And then the question was, why was capacity, let me step back. Staff had coverage or capacity. The city attorney came back and said, "take out capacity."
Okay.
And then the planning commission put "capacity" back in, and then you asked me to go back to the city attorney and say, "why did you take out capacity?"
Well, if we're talking about gaps, I'm not even sure it's helpful, because the gap is easy to measure with coverage, but not with capacity. So I'm okay with this, just speaking for me. Go ahead.
You're okay with what, Doug? I'm sorry.
Striking it, adopting the city attorney's recommendation. I think it's confusing, obviously, because I'm reading it, it could be read different ways to begin with, but I think the goal here is to provide reasonable service coverage.
Capacity's not
And capacity's an abstract question.
Or a business question.
Yeah. I think capacity is being misunderstood at some level here. I think the attorney, based on my reading of staff memos, reiteration of her comments, is, seems to be confusing capacity with number of users, and she makes some, I'm using the female pronoun, is it "she"? Okay. To the carriers wanting to attract additional users, and I have a feeling she might be confusing the concept, and perhaps it's me who's confused, but I think she's confusing the concept of capacity with additional users, and I don't think it's being used, the word "capacity" in that light. I think what we're talking about is, without being inaccurately technical, the data bandwidth that's being served to an existing set of customers within a coverage area, which can be measured in megabits per second. And that's a conversation about capacity as well, not just number of concurrent users or planning for future growth of number of users, but how much bandwidth is delivered to customers within a coverage area? And the conversation I believe we had last time is, you may have a situation where you don't fail a test of significant gap in coverage, because an RF engineer with a signal meter may say, "there is strong coverage here, I'm getting five bars of service, but if I have 1,000 users trying to download a file of a certain size at that location, the capacity of that transmission becomes unusable." So I think capacity is being used within the industry in a technical sense, and I think the attorney may be interpreting it as number of users, and from that perspective, she might be looking at it as, they will always argue, the industry, that is, that they want greater capacity so they can host greater users and grow their business, but I think even within a finite set of customers within a service area, capacity is a legitimate concern.
Yeah, I agree with how I think she was interpreting it, that she, by capacity, was thinking of future users and growth. But I also think that a significant gap in the service coverage could encapsulate the issue that you are talking about.
Yeah, I had some, I think we're on the same page there, and I think the way that section is written, where subsection I attempts to define significant gap, service gap is a bit clumsy. If you were to look at subsequent paragraphs, Roman numerals III, I, and III, I, they don't mention coverage or capacity, they merely say "service." Service can be broadly interpreted, I believe, as coverage and capacity. Service is a fairly broad term that I think is experiential. It's how is this customer experiencing their service? And it's a function, I think, of both coverage and capacity. And perhaps there's a drafting of this section that focuses on service gap and doesn't attempt to define it in subsection I as coverage or, or coverage and/or capacity, because I think we're certainly, for the limits of our collective knowledge on this topic, we're exceeding ourselves, and perhaps even with our attorney. But we, I think if we stay maybe one level above where we are in the current drafting, at service gap, we might be a little bit safer, and then allow the process to define what service is. I found the comment about wanting to attract additional customers not applicable to what we're trying to achieve here.
So if, I saw three heads nod, basically, to the adjustment section, and then Mike has raised a new issue, which says, could this be more carefully defined to address both the issues of coverage and capacity in terms of service to existing users? If I, I need some direction from the commission, and if that is something you want me to look into, I will talk to the city attorney about it, and hopefully, when we get her here at a meeting, we could provide some revised language.
Yeah, if it would interest anyone or benefit anyone, I could read an edit on subsection I that I wrote, that attempts to clean that language up a little bit. We don't have to necessarily adopt it in the moment, but if you think this is clear, would anybody care to hear it?
Yes.
This is a replacement to subsection I, and I'll see if I can make the right edits so you can follow along. "A significant gap in service of the owner's network exists such that users are regularly unable to connect to the service network, or are regularly unable to maintain a connection, or are unable to achieve a reliable wireless, or are unable to achieve reliable wireless service within a building." And I'll stop at that point. I think that's consistent with the other subsections in that area, and it sort of leaves the, this coverage versus capacity argument out, and it kind of, it runs the risk of being a little bit self-definitional with service, but I think it avoids that trickier issue of coverage versus capacity. Comment?
We heard earlier Lynda talk about the concern of this maybe being a limiting definition of what the service gap is, and so I'm almost wondering if you sort of stop after service gap, without
Without attempting to define?
Right. Because I think you made a good point, letting this work through the process, and the definition will come out in a lot of different ways. And she even uses the term "filling a significant gap," Lynda does in her second arrow on her memorandum. That supports the use of the term "significant" as well.
Mark?
So the attorney apparently said there's a legal definition of "significant." Is there also a legal definition of significant gap in service that would encompass, to the point about simplifying this paragraph here?
I can't answer that question, but I'm very happy to take back Mike's edit, for example, or any other edits that you have, and we'll talk it through with the city attorney.
Mike, did you want to respond to Dennis's edit?
Sure. I think some of the granularity in that subsection I is valuable, where it goes on to further explain what's meant by "service gap." I'm not sure I would agree, Dennis, that I would be prepared to dispense with that necessarily, unless I'm not following exactly where you would put the period in the sentence, but in terms of the definition about unable to connect to the service network, regularly unable to maintain a connection, or unable to achieve reliable wireless service within a, I think those are valuable statements.
I have no problem with a good statement, but it could be looked at as a limiting statement, so maybe you use it as "such as," unless it's the three items.
Ah, yeah. Well, I wonder if it adds any value at all if we say "such as." I wonder, from a legal drafting perspective, if it then opens the door to say, well, those are all great examples, but here's what we really want to achieve.
The definition, or the criteria already says "such that" in that same sentence.
I think "such that" is definitive.
That's a very different phrase.
Yeah, "such as" is exemplary, and "such that" is specific. And I like Dennis's recommendation. First, as many of you may know, shorter, my bias is towards shorter and simpler. And it's broader, as Dennis is proposing, to take out the modifiers.
So where, again, might the period go in the sentence?
"A significant gap in the service"
Well, I think he used the word "significant service gap."
Either way.
Yeah, that's almost the introduction.
A significant service gap, or a significant gap in the service, I think is the same. But then, it's, then strike "coverage or capacity," and then "of the owner's service network."
And end it there?
And then Lori had said, "for existing customers," which is a real important modifier, and I'm inclined to adopt that.
Really?
Because that otherwise leaves the door wide open for them to say, "we expect to have X thousand new customers, and therefore, we will have a significant service gap, unless you modify, allow us to put antenna in these places."
Well, how can they, otherwise, how could they proactively install infrastructure? If we know there's a 5,000 home development going into a neighborhood, we have to pre-antenna those neighborhoods for service.
I just want to clarify that I was not suggesting that. I was not suggesting
Did you say existing? Did you say existing cut? I mean, I don't know if you said it consciously.
I think Mike was talking about existing customers versus future customers, and we were discussing that in terms of the capacity issue, but I, I would not recommend that you change that to existing.
Well, Mike, I see your point. On the other hand, with no limits on, on service, and what service is needed, and how many may need it, then any projection would justify an adjustment. Any projection of increased service needs would justify an adjustment. Unless you have something that can limit it in the way that... Well, I, I'm not... That's reasonable. So here's my position on this. I don't think any service provider is going to invest a dollar more in infrastructure than they need to. And that comes with existing customers as well as future. So I'm not overly concerned with AT&amp;T, or Verizon, or T-Mobile building monopoles, or monofers, or anything that their customers don't need. So I, I guess I haven't been overly concerned with the building of overcapacity. And I, and I say that just because I think it holds true for so much of what we've been talking about, that I don't think any of the service providers has anything to gain by investment in, in infrastructure, antennas, or anything else that are beyond what benefit the residents of Kenmore. I understand the need to balance that with our other objectives, but I, I'm not worried about an over-investment in infrastructure that results in diminished aesthetics, because I see no other reason for any service provider to invest in technology, other than what directly benefits our customers now, or really in their very predictable future. In other words, I don't think they're going to be gambling that housing developments are going to occur in one neighborhood or another. They're going to have very tangible information that there's going to be a need, and they're going to invest based on that need. So I'm not too concerned about that.
And I pretty much agree with that, and I think it's a good point. But my concern is, does it create a great big loophole to allow them to use future needs to justify an adjustment? Because it seems to me it'd be very easy to satisfy this criterion by saying, yes, we have sufficient service now, but we expect in the near future to need twice that much, and therefore none of the available preferences suit what we need to do. We therefore have a significant gap. We therefore need to put poles in places that may obstruct views, or may be aesthetically undesirable. It's the loophole factor is my concern.
I think we're on the same, no, I think we're on the same page. And I think significant gap is still a present tense statement. I don't think there's anything in a drafting conversation that we've had yet that is not an existing significant gap, absent how we define it.
Maybe, but we're sort of, I think we're putting that question in the lap of a court. We don't know how that'll be interpreted.
Well, maybe that's a worthwhile conversation to have with, with the representatives from the service providers. If, if there is anticipated future capacity growth, how do the service providers handle that? If, if a new development is being built, and 1,000 new paying customers of any of our service providers are anticipated to live in an area, how, how do they prepare for that? And how do, and, and good question for us, how do, how does our municipal code handle anticipatory and proactive development of services in the, in, in the absence of a existing significant gap?
The other way that service might, the need for more antenna and a service gap might arise is even if the population is stable, that they have a new product or products that are popular for which they need additional capacity. And that's really been the explosion, my understanding is, in the last six, seven years. We've got the iPhone, we don't have a whole lot more users, but we got a whole lot more demand for capacity, because so many more people are using that product for wireless service. I heard Deborah might want to say something, I heard her voice, and I heard Mark, or I saw you making some gestures.
Yeah, I come back to a couple things. First of all, you know, again, is there, is there a legal definition of significant service gap? I mean, that may encompass all, you know, a, a lot of what we're talking about, and I'm...
The answer to that, I think, is yes.
You think there, you think there is case law that would, that would...
Oh, yeah, in a minute, Carol.
A voice from beyond.
Is the game over?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mark.
Don't tell us the score. So, so you think there is a definition of significant service gap that we could apply...
It's based on case law.
And it is based on case law, okay.
Although, you know, everybody says that, and we don't know what that definition is. Oh, the memo we got today? Oh, silly me. I didn't memorize it yet.
But, I mean, but it also says it's quote, extremely fact-specific, that defines and right line of the rule. However, each of these uses the term gap in service coverage, I would have to point that out. So, Deborah, these and those should be used as that exact term. But it's, you know, it's very clear that there's quite a bit of case law in this.
Well, I'm happy to see it. You know, I'm looking here.
We'll read the memo.
Thank you, Linda, for the authority. Mark, I'll let you finish, and then I hear Carol wanted to chip in, so I'd like to...
Yeah, the only thing, okay, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll obviously read this in, in more detail. The other thing was, I, I think I agree with Doug on being a little careful about encompassing sort of, you know, future possible capacity. I mean, do we want, you know, a, a large infrastructure build out without specific and, and defined uses there? So I don't necessarily know if I know the answer to that, but I would be leery of putting in service coverage gaps to include, you know, some nebulous future development that may or may not happen. So, that's all.
Carol? Hello?
We need better coverage. Capacity.
I feel bad. All right, and the next time Carol makes a noise, we're all going to shut up.
...by saying, oh, I'm talking, but can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Carol.
Go ahead, Carol.
Okay, I'm, I'm talking into my phone, can you hear me?
We can. Can we hear you now? Yes, we can.
Now?
Yes.
Okay, I think what is important for us to do is request that the city do a little bit of investigation and see what surrounding cities have chosen to use as their verbiage for this type of potential problems. And I did go out and do a little bit of research on the city of Mercer Island, and the Dinas, some smaller cities, and they, they did run into this same kind of glitchy verbiage. And I think it's important for us to remember that these recommendations that we want to send out to the city council are based on land use ordinances, that do govern what the facility, the communication facility we can do. And I don't think we need to be persuaded that just because they might have a significant gap in service that they want to highlight, that it's okay for them to just bypass our ordinance, or feel like they get special treatment. So I think the goal here is to create some governmental requirement for the facility communication companies to come in, and it's okay if we have these depth variance requirements, you know? And this little section that we're kind of hung up on is important, but I don't think it's as important as the rest of the organizations that we're trying to put in place.
Thanks, Carol. So I think there's general agreement, I think there's a majority here who want staff to go back to the city attorney, or bring in the city attorney, and look at some language similar to what Mike, and Dennis, and I have talked about. And I think you may need some more specificity on that. And then we can move on, as Carol said.
Yeah, I think I heard actually three, I'm aware of three alternatives. One is the language as it is written, which addresses the significant gap in coverage, as Deborah mentioned. The other version was Mike's alternative, which talked about the existence of a significant gap in the owner's service network. I think that's what I heard, and then using those following examples of service in a building, and, and those kinds of things. And then the third alternative I heard was one that Dennis brought up, which was just to leave it at that first sentence with none of those following examples.
Or may truly, clearly are examples, and are self-definitional. Such as, such that.
Mark? Okay. So we could do sort of a roll call and see, so to speak, see what each commissioner thinks the best approach would be to go back to the city attorney. Well, I think, maybe before we get there too, Deborah had a very good point that the case law, as limited time as we may have had to look at it, not that it's necessarily our job to look at case law, may specifically reference...
It may be using the language that we're saying when they should delete.
Well, not necessarily the such-that language, but...
Coverage.
Coverage, yeah. Yeah. And I looked, as Carol has done, at some other jurisdictions as well, and the language that I read from other jurisdictions, while implemented a little bit differently, did refer to coverage in relationship to service gaps. I was looking specifically for examples of capacity, just so I could get a better understanding of how capacity and coverage were used together. And I think, at least from a municipal code perspective, the focus was on coverage gap.
But have courts addressed that question, whether coverage is their primary or sole concern?
Again, the city attorney reviewed this language, and she wrote the changes into this language, one of which was this initial part. So...
Possibly the coverage term...
And Mike, you want to pull it down to your... Deborah, pull the mic down to your, near your mouth.
I, I'm just saying, it's possible that the term coverage covers the, the, the type of thing that we've been talking about, which is the kind of adequacy of the service. So could I make a recommendation? I'm seeing four heads nod with the I, or at least with Mike's concurrence, that the use of the term coverage is something that he's seen in other jurisdictions. Carol has seen, Deborah has called it out. I would suggest that the planning commission move ahead with the notion of coverage as written, and then we have the city attorney come, and you can ask all your questions about, should it be modified? Could it be modified? Tell us about the case law that this was based on, et cetera. I, I think we are kind of shooting in the dark without having her here if we're modifying language that very clearly was in these cases.
Okay. Any objection? Let's do that.
Good.
Go ahead, Lori, and pick up where you left off.
All right, so the next topic had to do with lattice towers, and as you recall, we talked about lattice towers.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'm sorry, I had one more on that section. It doesn't have to do with that sub-paragraph, it has to do with the visual impacts of the Maybe just a clarification. In, in B1, in that, it says, visual analysis, design minimize visual impacts of the facility, and then, and then B, minimization of impacts. It talks about the adjustment and what it would do, but it also references a decrease in negative visual impacts, including visual clutter, and there's reference to views of record. It strikes, strikes me as either, either maybe a little redundant, or, or not clear. So it's almost like visual impacts are, are being put in two different places. In that, in that criteria, it's in criteria B1, it's also...
Right, B2?
B, B, in 2B, and 2BI, and double I, and...
So you're suggesting maybe a combination, so that one, a decrease in negative visual impacts, including but not limited to visual clutter, or better preservation of views over your corridors? Do you want to combine those?
Well, yeah, I thought the language was stronger in B than it was in the, it says based on a visual analysis, the design minimize the visual impacts of the facility. Okay, that's, that's fine. Is that, is that a baseline criteria before you can even get to the minimization of impacts? I guess I'm not understanding how the visual impacts are to be assessed, as I read this.
So the first part talks about how the adjustment would minimize negative impacts to surrounding properties. And it talks about how you could do that. And then it gives a more specific definition that says negative impacts are minimized or eliminated if there is, and then it gives you these options as specific examples of minimizing impacts.
Right, I, I get that, but I guess I'm, I'm wondering why B1 is, is in there? That's, that's one of the baseline things, and then it gets further defined?
On the previous page, B1 on previous page.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe, okay, I'm sorry, I'm not being clear in the reference. It's B1 on, yes, on page two, talks about...
Oh, I see. No wonder I'm confused.
Sorry, we were, apologies.
Yeah, I see the issue.
And it seems like it's either redundant, or it's not, because I think the language is much stronger here in minimization of impacts on page three, the end of that.
Correct. I agree.
But as long as the visual impact is being obviously assessed, that's as thoroughly as, as we need to.
I think the only, the difference here is that B1 on page two includes the notion of a visual analysis, but that notion, if you want to pursue that, could be incorporated into page three. So you would say negative impacts are minimized or eliminated based on a visual analysis if there is.
I would support that approach, yeah. Yeah, can I, Ward Smith?
I, I see two heads nodding, or...
I find a lot of this redundant. So I don't want to, I don't want to create a lot of issues that others don't want to But we're talking about B1, and B2B then tries to define B1, right?
Yeah, but we're talking about combining them to create the same level of assessment.
I'm wondering how B2B helps B1. We already got the word minimize in there, then all of that follows. Although the word impacts is pretty vague.
Right, and so it's...
Right, correct.
What's broader than visual?
On page three, the small, the smaller one is, you know, one's recorder. Those impacts are broader than just visual impacts, right? It's an impact on property value.
Because of visual impact. That's just an example of the, the effect of the visual impact.
No, I, I don't think that B on page three does refer only to be... No, I don't think that B on page three does refer only to visual impacts.
Negative impacts are minimized, what negative impacts? Visual, right?
But it also talks about site characteristic, well.
Like I said, if you guys are happy, I'm not going to wrestle you over that. So, Mark, is that what you, you're satisfied with, but?
Yeah, so, or you're talking about taking out B1.
Correct.
Correct, and then just talking about B2 and, and it's A and B components.
Right.
Okay. Any objections?
That's clear, and more definitional, and I'm.
Okay. Carol, any objection? Thank you. And just procedurally, I'm thinking about this as applicant. How much effort am I going to put into item one until I'm prepared to move forward and reach some type of approval process on point two?
I didn't, I didn't understand that. Did you? Objections from me?
What's that, Carol?
I think she said no objections from me. I'm guessing. We're getting a lot of static here. We need better coverage.
All right. So what I'm hearing is that we are eliminating capitalized B1 on page two, and we are incorporating the concept of a visual analysis into minimization.
Thanks, Carol.
Minimization of impacts on page three.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that maybe resolves the issue I was about to raise, which was, if I were an applicant, how much effort would I put into a design until I have a go-forward approval on the point two? And I wonder procedurally, does the, do you see the conundrum? But that's true of every transaction. You have to do due diligence before you know if you're going to follow through and close a deal. Okay. Have we given them, can they, I guess is my question? Is there enough guidance? Is there enough guidance to say, ah, I have, clearly by this well-drafted Kenmore Municipal Code, I clearly have a significant gap that I could take to the bank, so I'm going to invest $25,000 in a visual design, which I will then make sure is minimizing negative, right? It seems a bit, what should I do first here? It is. It's a little, what you're getting at is it's vague and you can't be sure that your investment will yield. You almost want to go and establish a pro, form a case of significant gap, so that you then can go off and do your visual design to come back and establish point one criteria.
I think, I think that's what case law probably does, and maybe we'll hear from the attorney what significant gap is, and if it's fairly clear from this body of case law.
This is like antitrust law.
I mean, I got to tell you, and I agree with Linda here, look at this, the language from the Ninth Circuit, "Significant gap determinations are extremely fact-specific inquiries that defy any bright-line legal rule." It's like, if you're advising a client on whether you can satisfy the FTC and the Justice Department with a merger proposal, and this is pretty much what you have to go on, you really got to put a lot of money into your project before you're going to get a reliable answer. I'm not saying that there is a silver bullet answer to this, but I sympathize with what Linda's saying, when that's the case law.
Well, and that this, again, this is our kind of tertiary process. I mean, we have a grid that lays out the priorities, we have conditional use permits, so, you know, barring those, then, yeah, you got to make a case, you got to make a, you know, you got to build some reason that a hearing examiner would say, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I would find that.
And I'm, as I said, I don't know if there's a simple answer, but I think it's a legitimate point.
Yeah.
To say, this is so cloudy, I don't even know if we can satisfy a hearing examiner, and unless there's some kind of authority, administrative precedent that I could point to persuade the hearing examiner, it's a crapshoot. But I'm not sure there's a simple way around that.
Yeah.
If you, Linda or Ken, want to propose something, I'd be happy to see it. No, not now, because it's already late, but I mean, I don't want to, and this is the other thing, I mean, no matter what you said, Ken, I probably wouldn't be able to assess it for purposes of this issue right now, although maybe you do have something that's a simple answer.
You do have a specific proposal in our last round.
Okay. Let's have the city attorney look at that and give us her response.
Can I be grabbed?
Yeah. Come on up. Get in front of a microphone, if you're going to be brief.
I'll try.
I know.
So you were discussing in the adjustment requirements, the subsection B criteria, and how, how the significant gap in service criteria would work together with the minimization of impacts criteria, I think. And if I, if I understand, if that, if that's the debate, what I would do is to take number one, based on a visual analysis, the design minimizes visual impacts of the facility, and bring that over on the second page, so that you've got a criteria that looks at, is there a significant gap in service, and what do you need to do to prove it, and then you've got a criterion that looks at minimization of impacts, one of which is visual impacts.
That's what we proposed.
Yeah.
Isn't that where we are, Lori?
Is that where you wound up?
Yeah.
Right. Team.
We're on page.
All right. Go ahead, Lori. We're at lattice.
Right, lattice towers. So we talked about lattice towers in the context of the amateur ham radio facilities, and so we had talked about whether they should be banned, as they are in some other communities, but we wanted to be sure that this was not a ban for amateur ham radio facilities. It wasn't our intent to, to do that. So although we recommend that monopoles be the standard rather than lattice towers for wireless communication facilities, we wanted to exempt amateur ham radio, because that's a standard usage, as you recall, from the materials they presented.
Yeah, and your recommendation is to let it stand.
Right. And you're comfortable with the ban on lattice towers?
Any objection?
For the, for the industry?
For the industry.
Yeah, they don't, that's not something that they generally use anyways.
No, it's not. We've not seen them.
Anybody object? No?
Have we heard any public comment or industry comment that that's objectionable, the ban? You could ask.
Are T-Mobile and AT&amp;T concerned about a prohibition on lattice tower construction?
Lattice towers typically are very, very tall structures, over 150 feet tall.
All right. So the next item was adverse noise impacts. So initially, when I wrote this, I was not aware of any noise complaints, but we actually have had one noise complaint about a wireless communication facility. I don't anticipate this would be an issue, but we could add in a section, staff recommends adding in a section that says they should comply with the noise regulations in the community, just like every other use. So you would refer back to chapter 8.05 in the municipal code, which talks about allowable noise limits. It just makes that connection clear.
That's what you've written here?
Hmm?
That's what you've written here, right?
Correct.
Right. Are we talking about crackling?
It was humming, I think.
What noises are emitted by these wireless facilities?
Yeah.
Crackling?
I don't know.
Do you think there's noise that's usually from the generator?
Oh.
But it's typically not.
Yeah. Any, any objections? No?
My only consideration on that would be that, and I think Ken and I had a discourse on this during one of our earlier meetings, that during times of power outages, I know that some service providers bring portable generators to their antenna sites, and just like many businesses or homeowners spark up portable generators during power outages, would there be, would they be afforded the same temporary get-out-of-jail cards during power outages that homeowners enjoy or businesses enjoy to keep businesses running, their, to keep their power, to keep their antennas running during power outages that many other people or businesses enjoy?
That would make sense to me. I'm not sure whether that's addressed in chapter 8.05. I'd have to go back and look at that and see if there is an exception written in. There may well be in times of emergency.
Do we consider power outages in time of an emergency?
I, I don't know. I'd have to look specifically at that chapter, but I'm, I can do that.
Because I know when the power is out and the cable is out, that our cellular devices may be our best means of communication, so I'm actually kind of grateful, even if there's a generator running, to keep the signal going, that it's there.
Yeah. Do other folks?
I agree.
Agree?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's certainly plenty of generators when the power goes out.
Okay. So I'm going to make sure that whatever language, final language is in there is, acknowledges that in times of emergency, this wouldn't apply.
Thanks, Mike. Good point.
Okay. The next one, facade antennas and required setbacks. So we have allowances for different kinds of intrusions into required setback yards. Most of them are around 18 inches that extend into a required yard. It seemed to me that it would be practical to allow that same allowance for a facade antenna if it was placed on a building. So we were recommending that the relevant code section be amended to reflect that allowance.
Any objections? Okay.
I just want to clarify, this is really small in terms of height and view impacts, right? These facade antennas?
So the facade antenna, we have a height limit on, certainly, and it's lower in the view zones. It can't extend above the parapet or the roof line, but this would allow it to go into the setback.
Okay.
Some distance. Is that, am I seeing that that's okay? The next thing, criteria for amateur ham radio siting. So the radio operators had requested that rather than using language about making sure that if possible, something was happened, that the facility was placed on a portion of the lot as far as possible from adjoining neighborhood, neighbors, that it, as far as practical. I think that's something that makes sense, given that these things have to be cabled and that kind of thing. So the new language would read that the facility would be placed as far as practical from surrounding uses.
Deborah?
I'm, I'm fine with this, but what he actually used the word "practicable," which I think technically is a different word.
Oh, okay.
But, but I, I think that's kind of splitting hairs.
Can you please describe the difference?
I don't know. I just remember, I was like, oh, okay, that's, that's the word.
I agree with you, Deb.
Yeah.
I think he did use "practicable," which is often used in.
So do you want "practicable" or "practical"?
If you can define the difference.
I can define the difference.
I've yet to hear it. I've seen that word for 30 years, but.
I will look it up and then come back with a suggestion.
Actually, I think, I think I could guess what the difference is. Practicable means a practical thing you can implement. Although "practical" would have to be that, or it wouldn't be practical.
Yeah.
All right, I withdraw that. I look forward to your definition. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, this is at the discretion of the ham radio operator, what's "practical" or "practicable," correct, or?
Well, I mean, the city is reviewing the permit, so ultimately.
Oh, it's done through the permit, the permitting process by the, by the city?
Director. City Development Services.
Development, okay.
Probably.
That's good.
Right. The next item, equipment on private property for facilities in the right-of-way. So AT&amp;T had raised this question. There's a requirement that if you're within 300 feet of a residence, that the equipment in the right-of-way be undergrounded, and the question was, well, what if we were putting it on private property, disguising it as a shed, something like that? And if the equipment was to be placed on private property and undergrounding wasn't practical, then staff is, hey, practicable. Oh, sorry. I use that.
They're right.
Staff is supportive of placing that equipment above ground if stealth installation is involved in the landscaping requirements were satisfied.
Any objections? Dennis?
I was a little confused as to why the standard would be different, whether it's in right-of-way or privately owned.
Right. I think it, it really has to do with public use of the right-of-way, and if you had something that was disguised as a shed on a piece of private property, the, the visual impact would not be as great as if you had a piece of equipment sitting above ground in the right-of-way.
Okay. I'm just thinking that if they're looking at doing it in private property, it's going to be whatever few feet it is to the closest piece of property they can get access to. Or maybe I'm misconstruing the concept.
I think I'm confused. So if it was in the right-of-way, so where the street or the landscape strip or the sidewalk was located, then if it's within 300 feet of a residence, it goes underground. If, on the other hand, it was on private property and you would perceive that it was someone's private property with a structure on it, I think AT&amp;T felt that that was less intrusive than actually an above-ground structure in the right-of-way. You may, you may not agree, and if so, we could require that it always be underground?
No, I was just sort of the other way, and I just thought that this shed might be not that far away from the right-of-way location.
Right. It would, yeah, it could be close.
I guess I don't see much difference in impact on visuals, whether it's underground or not, or the right-of-way.
So you are supportive of having it, allowing it to be above ground in the right-of-way?
I would be, I guess, because this is a requirement, it doesn't say if not practical. And I would be more supportive of it if it actually said undergrounded unless it's not practical or right-of-way. But here, it's just a requirement, which then forces them to look, to go elsewhere to do a shed.
Well.
If it's not practical, you would do underground on the right-of-way.
I think it says if practical. Let's double check.
Well, I was confused, because you have a statement where it says it must go underground, then you have a statement going back to a different code section that said, "Shall be placed underground if practicable." It wasn't clear to me that it referred to the same thing.
It, it does say, "Equipment facilities shall be placed underground if practicable."
And is that specific to the right-of-way?
That's in the concealment elements language for all facilities. And then if we move over to equipment associated with an antenna on a utility or light pole, shall be placed underground if in the right-of-way and within 300 feet of a residence. So it appears both ways.
Okay. It just creates a little bit of a separation because it's a different sum clause.
Right.
Any other objection?
No, just clarification.
What's the role of the private property? I mean, does the private property owner have to give permission to have this on?
Oh, absolutely.
So, okay. So is this a negotiation? Can the private property owner say no? And so then the carrier has to go to the next, I mean, how does that? I'm just...
Right. So if...
So what practi, I mean, I'm just not clear on that.
So it would have to be placed underground if it was in 300, within 300 feet of a residence.
Right, in a public right-of-way.
In a public right-of-way.
Right. But if it has to go on a private property and the property owner agrees, then it can be, under this proposal, it can be stealth installation and landscaping and such?
Correct.
With the, does the property owner have to, so the property owner wouldn't have a choice? That if he or she agreed to it, they would have to go through this, you know, stealth installation? It wouldn't have to be undergrounded, in other words?
Correct.
Could the property owner, I don't know, strike a hard bargain where it had to be undergrounded? Or is it that when they just go to the next property owner or...
I don't know. We could...
Getting into the weeds far too, far too, far too deeply, but I just want to make sure the property, I wasn't clear about the property owner's role, and now I understand it, so I'm, I'm fine with this.
You're okay?
Yeah. Shut up.
Anybody else? Kate?
So then the next thing, on March 11th, there was a letter submitted by AT&amp;T, and there were a few things that we pulled out of that letter to address. One was that there was a request to eliminate the requirement for licensing for the professional assessing locational priorities and NIER. Staff does not support this suggestion, as there was no way for us to tell if someone was qualified without the license. That's how we determine that someone is qualified, because they have a license. And if there was some concern about the term radio frequency engineer, that could be changed just to professional engineer licensed in the state of Washington if...
And that's your recommendation?
That would be preferable, yes.
Just make it professional engineer?
Correct. It gets more to the issue of licensing. We really think the licensing is important.
Any objections? Dennis?
I guess I don't know enough about all that licensing procedure to know if this is creating a major impediment for their work staff to always have to go out and get that, just because we don't know whether it's licensed to that degree.
Yeah. I think it probably does make it more cumbersome, but there's no way for staff in development services to know if someone is qualified without something that they're relying on, some type of a license. And this is a current requirement. This is not a new requirement. The current code has this requirement.
And it's stated like this, just professional engineer?
I think in the current code, it may actually talk about radio frequency engineer. And AT&amp;T pointed out that there was maybe not such a thing. But that's a subset of electrical engineering, which you could use professional engineering.
Right, but professional engineer is extremely broad. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, what good would a chemical engineer be to this process, for example? I mean, it just seems like that's not a useful term, because it's way too broad.
Well, it's relying on the ethics of the person who is licensed as an engineer. That is true. But that, I mean, presumably, a chemical engineer would know that they could not sign an engineer's statement for radio frequency issues.
Okay. And I guess I don't know enough about how engineers are licensed to know whether there is something more specific that is appropriate for this, but...
We could say, I suppose, electrical engineer. My understanding is that the radio frequency engineering is a subset of an electrical engineering.
So does staff simply rely on the statement of whatever's submitted if it's...
Correct.
Submitted by a professional engineer or a radio frequency engineer? They don't look at the merits?
Nope.
Then I guess you got to have some threshold.
Go looking at locational assessing.
Right.
You have to go back to that section and make sure that the assessing requires that degree of education.
Lori's saying they don't look at that.
Right, they need a license.
If there's a favorable assessment from somebody with a license, they accept it. There's no quality control. Any objections?
Well, this is consistent, your recommendation is consistent with other jurisdictions in terms of these, this particular license or this particular requirement?
I would have to look at that specifically.
I mean, to me, the big problem here isn't whether the person has a label or a title or a license. It's, we're not reviewing the merits, and we're relying on the label for quality, for reliability, for acceptability.
I mean, that's kind of consistent with other licensing. You know, I mean, I just think of my own profession. You know, you have a blanket license that says you're a psychologist, but you don't practice outside your area of expertise. And same with law. I mean, you know, there's, you're a lawyer, you're passed by the bar, but it doesn't say you're a lawyer for this particular...
I'm not making a technical assessment. And, I mean, sometimes, I suppose, but I'm not a judge. I'm an advocate when I wear my lawyer hat. So I'm not in the same role. But the city's relying on a technical assessment by, they're relying, they're relying on a statement from somebody who's made a technical assessment and assuming it's correct, simply because they have a license. And the better approach is, look at the assessment itself and see if it meets satisfactory criteria, regardless of who submits it. But that's adding another layer of review that the city may not be able to afford, so it's hard for me to say they've got to do it.
I'm just looking at the locational priorities, and I'm not, it seems to me, if you've got somebody that's got 25 years of experience, that's making those type of comments, that's what you're looking at. I mean, these aren't necessarily highly technical questions. Can you correlate on existing power?
Lynda and Ken are just dying to say something, so I'm going to give them a chance. Come on up.
So I think there's two issues. So assessing the locational priorities, for T-Mobile, typically that involves two professionals. One is the site acquisition specialist, and the other is an RF engineer who is employed by T-Mobile. And the site acquisition specialist will do things like figure out if the site is leasable, if it's zoned for the particular use, you know, if the, I mean, all the things that have to do with sort of the non-coverage analysis parts typically are done by the site development specialist. And the radio frequency engineer is someone who is qualified by education and experience to perform those tasks. And, you know, all of those guys, they, you know, if they have a resume, you could ask for a statement of qualifications or an affidavit of qualifications to accompany the report. But we typically, in this context, you're talking about locational priorities and NIER. So NIER, that's the one where the engineer certifies whether the FCC standards are met. And oftentimes, there is a third-party engineer who is a PE electrical engineer who does that particular report, the NIER report. But that person is not typically the one who is working on the network coverage analysis. That typically is somebody who's in-house at T-Mobile, who's qualified by education and experience, and they may or may not be licensed in the state of Washington. They, you know, may have been educated somewhere else and...
Do you have an alternative to propose?
Ken, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we have suggested language on, do you guys have copies of our red line?
Yep.
Attachment four. So this would be 186150. We could say licensed, signed by a licensed professional engineer or other qualified professional, and then include a statement of qualifications and experience with that. And I think the point is, is that AT&amp;T's RF engineers are not licensed professional engineers. And so the challenge is, is that to do the locational analysis, you'd essentially have to be hiring a third-party engineer to design your network, which doesn't make any sense. So if a statement of qualifications and experience would suffice, and I believe the city has a third-party review provision as well, that also could be used if there's any doubt about the information that's being provided.
Go ahead, Lauren.
So what is the qualification of a radio frequency engineer? What license do they hold?
Some of them have general radio licenses from the FCC, you know. Some don't have that. It's just, it's their experience and their education. And certainly, that's provided oftentimes with the RF analysis that they would provide. So they would say, I was educated here, I've been working in this network design, here's my experience, here's my resume, as Lynda has suggested.
Right. Although we have, this again is an existing requirement, so has that been problematic?
I don't believe the city has received...
Yes, we do. I went through and...
Signed by outside engineers for the alternatives analysis?
Well, we're talking about two different things. I'm talking about the NIER.
Yeah. So the NIER is basically a calculation, as Lynda explained, for, and that can be done by an outside engineer. It could also be done in-house by an employee of AT&amp;T, which is frequently what we do. We can do it either way. I think the major objection we have is really the locational analysis of being done by, yeah.
I actually agree with AT&amp;T about the locational analysis. And I am thinking that perhaps in that particular section, which is, if I can find it here, it is on page three. So it talks about, you have to follow the sighting hierarchy. A new wireless communication facility must be located on the highest ranking site unless the applicant can demonstrate through relevant information, including but not limited to the report of a licensed radio frequency engineer. I would suggest striking that phrase. And just say, located on the highest ranking site unless the applicant can demonstrate through relevant information that the highest ranking site is not feasible. And then back with the NIER material, I definitely would keep the licensing.
I'm inclined to allow for a statement of qualifications, so that somebody in-house with the carrier could satisfy that NIER.
Report of a qualified professional.
Yeah, if you want to say professional, that's vague enough, but it seems, I don't see much benefit in saying, you got to go to a third-party outside licensed engineer when we've got somebody in-house who's got the experience and education to make an equally reliable assessment.
Is this for the location or for the NIER?
NIER.
Oh.
Well, I mean, in both cases, the issue is impartiality, so...
I don't see a difference.
Whether someone's in-house versus not?
Whether someone's paid by the company to give a statement, as opposed to works for, on salary for the company to give a statement?
Good point.
Have you ever interviewed an expert witness?
Yeah, no, I mean, you're right.
I have.
You're right. No, you're right.
I can tell you that you're not going to be surprised by their bias.
Yeah.
So I'm fine broadening it to accommodate the industry.
So I need to hear from everybody?
Kate, any objections? Kate, do you understand?
Okay, so we're going to broaden it to allow the qualified, but we'll use the AT&amp;T language, basically.
Yeah.
And we're broadening it, again, are we broadening it for both location and NIER? Because it seems like one is technical and one isn't.
That's what Doug was suggesting.
Both.
Yeah, I would...
Really?
If bias is your concern, I don't see a distinction.
Qualifications is my concern.
Right. So I think it's, you can be as qualified to render an assessment without being licensed as you can with the, not necessarily, but you can be qualified without a license to render an assessment.
Oh, the NIER. I guess I would have to know that that's the case.
I don't know for sure, but I would say, you know, the expert witness standard, to be qualified to render an extra opinion in a trial?
Well, this isn't just an opinion.
It's an assessment.
Yeah. That's a technical assessment. I don't know what the qualifications are, so I'm not that quick to say that.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I just, I'm not clear what the qualifications are.
So obviously, AT&amp;T, like other carriers, they have to provide certifications directly to the FCC about the, and all of those are prepared by AT&amp;T's in-house staff, that you meet the FCC emissions requirements, which is what the NIER is for. None of them are provided by Washington State Licensed Professional Engineers or things like that, yeah.
Well, that answers that question.
Mark?
So you're saying it's basically good, it's good enough for the FCC?
Right, exactly.
Is that what I'm hearing? Your proposal for the license, the requirement for the NIER is good enough for the FCC?
Yes. So we, they prepare, AT&amp;T has an entire compliance department that is dedicated to making sure that sites conform to all FCC requirements. And that's the same staff that would provide assessments to the city about the emissions of that. So yes. And of course, the FCC is the enforcement authority for all emissions. It's not the city, of course. It is the FCC.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. Okay, anybody else? We're good? Hold it. Bob Seeger. Do you guys want to keep going or set over things? How close are we to the end? Oh, we're really close.
We're really close.
Okay.
We have two more items.
All right.
So the next one had, was a concern about the interference regulations, and there was some language about the city taking some action if there was a perceived issue. The city attorney agrees that that language should be eliminated. Staff continues to recommend retaining the first sentence of this section that would read, wireless communication facility shall meet all federal interference rules and regulations. It's a statement of the obvious, but we do something similar with NIER, so...
Any objection? Yes, Deb?
I don't know if I have an objection. I guess...
No, take your time.
The, well, the fact that it's a statement of the obvious suggests that we don't need it, I think. I mean, if it's something above the obvious, then does that mean that the city is somehow going to, I mean, I guess I don't want to have things that we can't enforce.
Right, well...
And if we're not the enforcement arm, which we're not...
Then we should take out the NIER stuff, too, because we're not the enforcement arm on that.
Well, yeah. I mean, I guess I would, you know, when I heard Ken just say a minute ago, it's like, it's good enough for the FCC. It's, well, then why are our fingers in this process?
I think historically, we've had language about this, but just to sort of call it out as an issue. But certainly, we don't have to do that.
Well, or I guess the alternative is to clarify that we're not the enforcement arm. If you're just trying to recognize that there is something that oversees this, and we're just sort of acknowledging that, then we may want to clarify our role with respect to that. That's all.
We could do that.
So...
Mark, anybody?
So basically, it is, it's redundant. It's already known that wireless communications have to meet all these rules and regulations federally, right? So...
Well, I would say that...
So we're not adding another statement of sort of intent or...
Right. I would say that the regular person reading the code would not know that there are these rules and regulations. And so just as with NIER, we would say they have to comply with federal rules and regulations. It's more just an awareness that these things exist. But Deborah's point that we have no enforcement role or authority is well-taken, and you could eliminate it altogether, the whole discussion. If it came up, the only thing it does is to, then somebody comes to the city and said, well, you're not regulating NIER. And we say, well, even though there's nothing about it in the code, it's regulated by the FCC, and that can be an answer. But in some ways, if you're just reading a code cold, you might like to know that they're complying with federal rules. I see both points of view.
And that specifically, NIER is monitored by the feds. I mean, if somebody's interested in that issue, and they're kind of saying, well, you know, where does it say?
Right.
I see the value in acknowledging that somehow, so...
So where are you, Deb?
Well, no, I would do both. I would acknowledge it and just, I mean, if there's a way to clarify that it's monitored by the feds, the feds have the authority, we don't, or, you know... it's monitored by the feds, the feds have the authority, we don't, or, you know, I don't, I don't know how to wordsmith that, but, but maybe the attorney could do that. Because we definitely have people that, you know, are interested in these issues, and they'll read it and they'll say, "Why isn't, why isn't X issue here in our regs?"
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too. If someone wants to go to the trouble of reading the code and seeing that, they should, they should have it made as clearly as possible, so I'm fine with that, too.
So I see two heads nodding.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to leave it in. I don't know if to put in language to say, "But we don't enforce this," actually might be misleading, but, well, confusing. Misleading's the wrong word.
I don't know. I'm mixed. Sorry.
Yeah. But I will say, I think it's, for one sentence, I'm not going to fight it. And it does have some value.
All right. And the last thing from the March 11th letter, additional, AT&amp;T had proposed some additional language in the ECFM section, and the city attorney reviewed those comments and supported the additional language. So it just talked about what kinds of conditions could be imposed on an ECFM permit.
Any objections? None? Okay.
Okay. All right. So the remaining outstanding items are responses to the March 29th AT&amp;T letter and the letter from T-Mobile. And then determining, moving back to the adjustment discussion and looking at final language. Those are things that could be done at your second meeting in April, which we may try to reschedule to a time when this city attorney could attend. The next question I'm going to raise is maybe one you're not ready for, and that's fine. But I do want to say that once we develop the final regulations, then the next step is a public hearing. And the public hearing, because of the timing of that, has to be done two meetings before the public, I have to know, two meetings before the public hearing if you want to move ahead. So what I'm saying to you is that if you want to hold a public hearing on May 3rd, I would have to know tonight, even though we still would have another meeting between now and then, to wrap things up. If that seems premature, we won't do it. That will mean that you would not be able to hold your public hearing until the second meeting in May, if you were ready at...
At best.
Right.
But given the course of this process, I would say it's unlikely that we'll, it's on, there's a good chance we will still have questions, issues, and revising to do after the next meeting.
I guess I'd like to suggest that we, at some point, have to say we've gotten the input from the industry that we're going to get. And, I mean, because it could go on ad infinitum. We could keep shoveling letters at us every week, which it seems like is happening. So, you know, we have to, we have to move forward. So I guess I would, I would like to see us go ahead and schedule the hearing, but...
Okay.
But that's just me.
I understand.
I think we should wait, simply because we just have so many bigger, open questions, and I'd hate to start announcing that we're going to have a public hearing and then find out if we have to cancel because we're not ready.
Okay. Anybody else?
I agree with Dennis.
Okay.
I also agree with Dennis and Mark.
Okay. So we have a majority on that.
Great.
All right. Anything else? We satisfied that element of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. Is there any new business or announcements? Not hearing any. I will make one brief announcement, it's sort of an update. Traffic, Sound Transit. The Sound Transit Board voted to include the three projects requested by Ken Moore and others in the 522, 522 Transit Now Coalition. That's a big deal. So we're on the ballot of the draft. I should say, we're on the draft of the ballot. Ballot will be finalized, I think, in June by the Sound Transit Board. There's a survey on the Sound Transit website. If you haven't seen it, that would be your chance to endorse those projects, because until they are in a final form adopted by Sound Transit, it could be bumped, and we could get virtually nothing out of that ballot initiative. So think about doing that. There, and also, if you're up for it, send me an email, and I'll send you some other things you might be able to do, a letter, email to Sound Transit's board, thanking them for putting it on there and encouraging them to keep them. The city's made a lot of progress on this. When you think about a year ago, when this was starting, we weren't even on the survey of possible projects to be put on their ballot initiative. Now we're on it, and we want to be, we want to stay there. So feel free to let me know if you have further interest in addition to perhaps doing the survey on the Sound Transit website. Anything else? No? All right. There being no new business, I hereby adjourn this meeting.